Okay, it's 7 o'clock. We will call to order the regular January meeting of the Danby Select Board. Please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clark, would you please call the roll?
Here. Heaton.
Here.
Abbott. Fuller.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
Bev.
Here.
Rick, could you do me a favor and take down that note that's up on the tack strip there that says "Procedure for Remote Access"? Have it to me. This is the Procedure for Remote Access and Public Comment at Board meetings. Danby Select Board and Planning Commission meetings are open to the public in person and remotely, but are not public meetings per se. Public attendees, both in-person and remote participants, who wish to comment on agenda items, will be given an opportunity at the beginning of each meeting to do so. As in the past, written communications may also be sent to the boards for consideration. Businesses conducted and votes are cast by board members. The chat feature is only to be used by remote participants to alert the host to technical difficulties; it is not for private conversations. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the rules for public participation are: Remote attendees will be muted by the online host upon joining the meeting, remaining so unless recognized to speak. Participants should arrive on time and state their name for the record. Those who desire to speak in order to comment or question should use the hand-raising function and will be recognized in the order in which the hands were raised. Remote participants, when recognized, will unmute and clearly identify themselves by first and last name and the area of town in which they reside. Comments and questions are limited to 2 to 3 minutes. Anyone who desires to speak longer than that should arrange to be placed on the agenda beforehand. General ground rules are that speakers will not be interrupted; there will be no crosstalk between members of the audience; the speaker will treat the proceedings and other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue and not the personalities. Who do we have joining us from that way?
We have Lynn Lawson, Tricia Katz, Brian Bev, Bill Richardson, and Matt Smith, Chris Hardaway, Terry Parker, Gary Bear, Michael Lees, Renata Aliard, Doug White, Doug White Senior, and iPhone, and Sharon White.
Thank you. Next will be a motion to set the agenda, and we will be striking the transfer station relocation action because both Matt and I goofed thinking that they were meeting this past Tuesday, which is the first Tuesday of the month, not the second. Also, they're meeting next week, so more on that in the future. I don't know if we'll wind up having a special meeting or we'll put it on February. We'll see how that goes. Other than that, I don't have any changes. Does anybody else?
I'd like to add an executive session before the treasurer's report to discuss personnel.
Okay.
Do you want to put anything about the minute taker and the open law thing we discussed with the budget? Do you want to put that on there? Replacement or no?
Yeah, we don't really have a motion on here to adopt the budget. And I'm...
You do want the treasurer's report?
Okay, I'm sorry. I would say that that probably fits under the discussion there on the budget. Any other additions, deletions? All those in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Who made that motion?
I made the motion.
Who seconded it?
I did.
And then we will move to public comment. Tracy.
We had an incident here in town that you all should know about, or if you don't already. Fuller Sand and Gravel blasted on November 15th. The first blast he did made one of the houses on my street sway. The second blast at 11:23 a.m., I could feel it come from behind me, go through under my feet on the ground, and hit the house. Now, right after that, the girl that was doing the seismology, or whatever that machine is, gets on the phone and says, "Oh, did the second shot go off?" The machine never went off. And I thought, oh crap, what has he done to my house? I go in, I didn't see any cracks, just the usual pictures, askew, said, okay. Then the furnace came on and made the most god-awful sound I've ever heard. The blast went through our cellar and displaced our furnace, moved it according to the furnace guide. It had to be a very big vibration for that to do. Rick spent hours pushing it back into place, attaching the top of it. It's a forced hot air. He knocked that off. And then he had to plumb it and put shims in because it was so... And it's still making that god-awful sound. So he did all the strapping, he taped seams, and now it's still making the sound. And that seismology machine never went off. So we have no record.
I would recommend calling the Environment Board. That's the best bet.
I would recommend you stop blasting because every time you blast, you damage somebody's house.
Thank you.
This is not the place to be blasting in the middle of a village.
Nothing you said had any truth to it. But this isn't the place to be discussing...
That's what you said. You're a broken record, Tom. Every time somebody tells you something you don't want to hear, you go, yes.
Tracy, there was two seismographs.
Not that one.
When the vibration doesn't meet the limit for it to actually set it off, one of them actually went off, the other one didn't because the limits were so close.
There was not two on that day. I have it on tape, Tommy. There was one, and she said it, something happened.
Please call the Act 250, and don't bother the board on this. We have nothing to do with it. Please, just...
Hey, it concerns all of you because you're all condoning it because you are...
We have a valid permit. Please call the Act 250 Board.
There is no more Act of 50 Board.
No, please call anyone in Environment because they all know you well.
Start taking responsibility for your actions, Tom. You frickin' broke our furnace in the middle of winter.
Tracy, please call somebody other than this board. The state of Vermont is your...
We do not have control over this. This is...
Yes, but you and the Planning Commission...
Tracy, coming here lying to this board doesn't help you.
I am not lying, Tom. That's what you say to everybody that tells you something you don't want to hear.
Yeah, everybody that shows up and lies, I tell them they lie.
They're lying. They don't know what they're talking about.
And they all tamper with the machines, Tracy. We've heard it all. Thank you.
I did not say they tampered with the machines. She said, and it's on tape, that something, the machine did not go off. Something was wrong with it.
There was nothing wrong with the machines.
I would request the board, before he blasts again, get an independent company, not Maine Drilling and Blasting, to put their machines out so we can get a proper reading.
And I believe that happened, didn't it?
It was Maine Drilling and Blasting that did it. It was their truck.
See, let's not even entertain it.
And I'm not lying, Tom. You're lying. Because you said, "Oh, we're not blasting until spring." Well, I knew that.
Tracy, you do know the number to Act 250. Call them.
No, I think I'm going to call a lawyer.
That's a better idea. I would love that.
You're going down with them.
No, I would love that one. That would be better.
You know, it is not germane to the jurisdiction of this board.
Yes, it is because the board is responsible for the health and safety of the town.
And if you think you can come here and threaten us, that is inappropriate. People start playing the legal game, you know, there's counter suits too, so you might want to think twice.
Oh, you're going to think twice.
Are there any other members?
My people are beginning to build their furnace.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
I have Lynn Lawson.
Okay, Lynn and then Matt.
Okay.
Me too.
Lynn, you may speak. You just have to unmute yourself. She hasn't yet, so...
Okay. Has she heard you recognize her?
Yes, I sent a message to saying, Lynn, you may speak, just unmute yourself.
Okay.
And I'd assume she could hear me saying that right now.
So while we are waiting for Lynn to unmute, Matt?
The transfer station discussion, that will be a discussion prior to any kind of voting, I assume.
Yes.
Will that be put forth to the town as part of... It will not.
No, that's a Select Board decision.
Do you have a concern on it, Matt?
I do. My one concern is, has... The way I... And my apologies if I didn't attend the last meeting. The understanding that I have is that we would be taking over the transfer station and running the transfer station, so I have several questions regarding that. The first being the cost the transfer station has had in the past, what that's been.
In the town of Danby or the...
In the town of Mount Tabor.
Okay.
So that we understand what that cost implication is.
Yes, I have asked Matt Gaspareri to get us that information.
The second question would be, we understand that there's going to need to be additional bins or larger bins for the collection of trash and recycling. My question is, the charges that will be placed on both Mount Tabor and Danby for trash, is that part of the lease agreement and will that be agreed upon for, this will be the price going forward, for all people of both towns? That should be discussed and understood and probably part of the lease.
Absolutely.
And my final concern, and probably my biggest concern, is the legal ramifications of having a transfer station in another town which we are signing a lease for as a town entity. And if someone gets hurt on that property, or the fact that we have to pay somebody to run that transfer station, it's outside of the town lines of Danby. Is that a problem?
I guess my only thought on that would be, it's no different than Mount Tabor having the school in Danby or us having... I mean, there's insurances that cover no matter... You know, the town would carry the insurance on the property and stuff.
So we would be insuring a property that's outside of the town of Danby?
Yeah, which is... That's can be done. I mean, that's not unusual.
I mean, we could have a storage facility that's outside of the town of Danby.
As long as it's been done before. I'm not familiar with what's been done.
As long as it's a legal document that's entered into by both parties.
Okay, as long as those points are covered. I think it's important that we understand those points are covered and who's liable. Leasing from the town of Mount Tabor, if that lease includes provisions that we have to have insurance and we are responsible and liable, we need to understand that going in.
Oh, yeah.
And we've seen no copy of anything that they're looking for yet. So it'll be in discussion, Matt, and those are good points to bring up.
And, you know, next Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, is their Select Board meeting, so it's open to the public, and you're certainly free to voice your concerns and opinions.
Or even attend for the information.
I was going to say, are our Select Board members attending that?
I'm considering going. I have the same list of concerns myself on this, that I want to make sure that I bring up, and that includes, you know, the cost, the insurance, different, you know, issues, number of the bins and dumpsters who are going through, a bunch of different stuff that I wanted to discuss before, you know, before I go into the role.
And what their current deficit might be.
And you're... Because I've heard in the past that we don't necessarily make a profit on...
No, we don't break even. Mount Tabor does not break even either.
No.
But we don't know those numbers yet, and we're going to be looking for it to be in writing that... The way I would, myself was looking at it, is take the population that the two towns have and, you know, if we're 1,400, they're 400, basically they'd be 20% of our population. So any loss that we have, I think they should be responsible for 20% of that. And if they're not willing to agree to it, I don't think we should go any further.
Okay. And Brad, you said their meeting was Tuesday next week?
Tuesday, and I think they meet at 6:30, don't they?
They're earlier. Yeah. I don't take... But it could be 6:00.
Yeah, probably, they usually post their legal postings on the bulletin board in the post office. So I would check that or call the town office over there.
All right, thank you.
I think they put an agenda down to the store too, if I remember right.
Lynn has unmuted herself. I don't know if she still wants to...
Hi, Lynn.
Hi, everybody. So, you know, I'm not used to doing the Zoom thing, so I, you know, it took me a while to figure it out, so to figure out how to unmute it. But I had spoken to Bradley Bender personally a few times, and I suppose everybody had gotten a copy of the letter that I had emailed to Janice, and she forwarded it to everybody about the cannabis, you know, smell from my neighbor's operation that's overwhelming, affecting my health, my property, and my well-being. And I was, when I was talking to Brad, I was under the assumption, maybe I was wrong, that he was going to let me know when the town had a meeting to renew his license for the activity in the town. I want the town to also know that nobody other than myself is living next to this operation and the smell of it and the effect it's having on my respiratory health and my partner's respiratory health, and it's really unbearable. It smells like a bunch of dead skunks. And I never received any email from anybody in response to that, other than Brad, saying that he had exercised my concerns and that everybody just passed it anyway. I was not there to represent myself because I did not know they were having a meeting. So I just, you know, I just think this is unconscionable that nobody knows what it's like, and not only is it a nuisance, but it is... It is un... I don't even know the word to describe it. It's not like, it's not like living next to a dairy farm. It's much worse. So I've been in contact with the Cannabis Control Board, you know, I have Brian Collamore in my corner. He's trying to get the laws reversed. He was not against, he was not for legalization of it in our state. And so I also know that there are only two licenses in our town. One is over on Scottsville Road. It's an indoor facility. And one is next to my house, next to my driveway with over 100 plants, and it permeates down into my house, in my driveway, in my front door, in my yard, in my field, and I can't even enjoy my property, and it's affecting my property value. And I have written this letter. Nobody responded to it. I mean, why did nobody think that this was important?
Hi, Lynn. This is Tom Fuller. I guess my question to you is, were you not aware that the license was coming up for the adoption at that meeting? I mean...
No, I was not aware. I had spoken to Brad, and I thought he was starting to let me know that. Maybe I was misunderstood that. I talked to him two times about it in person. He encouraged me to write a letter. I have a disability. I was, you know, having some issues with my disability, and part of that, part of that issue is my respiratory disorder. Nobody in this town, or in the state of Vermont, has done any due diligence about the ramifications that this has on people that have medical disorders. Not everybody, not everybody can tolerate the cannabis.
No, maybe, I don't want to cut you off, but I think if we would have known your feelings or a letter or anything before we adopted it, it would have went a long ways towards, you know, at least my vote, and I'm sure the other people's vote on it. But the problem is, you're asking us to do something that we've already done, and I'm not even sure if that's possible to undo a license.
Brad hadn't informed me because Brad emailed me back, and he said that he had expressed my concerns with the board when you all voted for it. Is that not correct, Brad?
That's true.
That is true.
That one, I think, was a renewal. We also, like I said, the state doesn't allow, we don't have the ability to say...
Right.
We're not really saying yes or no.
The state says that the town has the ability. I have been round and round and round, and the state doesn't want to take responsibility for something that they caused, so they're leaving it up to the towns. And I said to the Cannabis Control Board, "Well, that's really kind of stupid. This is a monster you created, so why are you making the house responsible for it?"
Why are you agreeing they're the ones that went down their checklist and said everything is in compliance with their rules and regulations?
Well, that's not true because the rules and regulations state that it's not supposed to be able to be seen on the road, which it is. You know, it's a clear view from my driveway. There's no... There's, you know, I mean, listen, I could go on and on, and I don't want to, like, waste your time, but I really feel that this is, like, really important, and it's a health hazard to me, and it's a health hazard to a lot of people in the state of Vermont. And, you know, I just, anyway, so I'm just putting that out there. I didn't know that the town was voting on it. If I had known that, I would have been down there, and I would not have had to do this on the backside, you know? So my question is, is like, how am I going to continue to live on my property and clean my air? Where are my rights? Where are my rights to breathe my clean air? You know? You know, if my neighbor wants to smell his cannabis operation, you know, that's his right. He can do it in his house, but, you know, why should I... Why should my health have to be subject to that?
I think you brought up a lot of good points, Lynn, and I express those concerns when we were adopting. The first things is that, is there any actual setbacks and distances? And us being naive to the process as the state is, like you said, controlling it? Then I think a lot more restrictions should be in place for those.
Right. But they're also explicitly, we don't have zoning. You cannot, by their rules, you can't do anything stricter than what they do because we don't have anything, we don't have zoning, we don't have things to control. The only thing that I can think of, we can ask the Control Board to see if that license is in compliance. I don't know. I mean, that's the only thing I can possibly think of.
Well, she can do the same thing.
Right, but I'm just saying it's...
And the piece of paper that we got from them said that it meets their criteria.
That's unfair of you to say something like that because you're not living it. And if you were, you would, you would, like, do something about it. I guarantee you.
And we're not against you on this, Lynn. We're just saying that our hands are somewhat tied, at least as far as we know. And if there was something that we could do to help on this, and I mean, I'm looking to everybody else on the board, I don't have a quick answer for you.
All we can, the only thing we can do is request, I mean, the only avenue I even realized we have is through the Cannabis Control Board, and she already reached out to them, and she got nothing from them either.
See, and that's not right because it's affecting her.
And they are not an easy board to deal with. They apparently all work from home. It takes quite a while to get any kind of an answer.
None of those people in the Cannabis Control Board are living next to this or dealing with this. They passed a law, they have a bunch of people that are sitting there, you know, running the Cannabis Control Board so the state can make money on it, and for you to sit there and say, whoever that person is over here on the far right, say what he said. What is your name, please?
Greg.
Okay, Greg. That makes absolutely no sense at all.
I'm trying to explain what I understand of the rules that the state of Vermont set.
And you know this because why?
Well, we were through the Planning Commission, we reviewed a lot of documents and the laws. There was a presentation put to us, and also, before our meetings, they actually went and looked at some of the laws again. The cannabis, there's different things put out for the Select Board by the state to explain how the rules work and what we have for authority.
So my interaction with Cannabis Control Board is that they were giving the towns the right to regulate it, and they were doing that because they didn't want to be responsible for the snafu that they had caused because they never did any of their due diligence to see about the effects that it was having. Not everybody has, you know, people have severe allergies to this. Not everybody can tolerate it. So I may not be speaking eloquently enough for you, but I'm telling you that this is a serious problem, and it is affecting my health and my breathing, and it is a health issue. I had been to my doctor three times over the year this summer, just so I could, like, actually breathe. I mean, who wants to go outside their door in the morning? I mean, who wants to go outside their door in the morning and, and smell a bunch of dead stuff?
So then just, um, the cannabis control board--
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't want to like get, be angry or anything, but I am really like, I am like--
No, it's understandable, but, um, let's, you know, we're just trying to have a good conversation here. Um, so the cannabis control board, you've spoken with them.
Mm-hmm.
And they said there's nothing they can do.
They said, well, um, they, no, what they said was, is that, um, that I wasn't the only one with this problem. And there were a lot, they have a lot of complaints. And they said they were going to, they were going to get together, um, and they were going to like research, um, the effect that it was having on people. So, I mean, this has been an ongoing issue. But they also said that the towns have the right to, um, have control over what they want, um, what they will allow or will not allow in the town. Like, just say for instance, you know, the town of Manchester with all their dispensaries that they have in the town, but they will not allow anybody to grow any, any cannabis in the town of Manchester. But they have cannabis, they have dispensaries in the town. So, um, so the, and, and they did that because, um, they didn't want to be responsible, um, for, um, kind of domestic they created without doing their due diligence. So they wanted the towns to be responsible. And I of course said, well, that's the stupidest thing I ever heard of. Why is the town responsible for something that you created? And, um, anyway, so it's, so the town has, as far as I know, the town has the right to either allow it, disallow it, or, um, you know, um--
Lynn, could, and, and I don't want to kick this can down the road, but could we put this on the agenda so that we actually, because the problem is under the public comment, this really wasn't a, a good thing. I'd wished you'd asked to be on the agenda and we could have maybe had more preparation even on it or given you more time, but, um--
Listen, I, I know, I know my time's up and I, I, but I just really needed to, I really just needed to, to make you aware of, make you aware of this.
Would you like to be on next month's agenda?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and, and in that time, at least me and I'm sure the other board members will probably try to do as much research as we can to help answer anything as well.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay.
Bill?
Yeah, I had a quick recommendation on how you wrote the article for selecting the treasurer. And I would like to, you know, drop it off with you. Basically just let people know that they have a choice between either voting for the treasurer or, or the select board appoint, that's all. I think at the end of the last, last month's meeting, Brad, you had recommended some language for--
Um, I received language from our town attorney. As soon as I find it here. Town attorney wrote the article, "Shall the Voters Authorize the Select Board to Appoint the Town Treasurer as Provided in 17 VSA Subsection 2651F."
So the only change I had was, "Shall the voters continue to elect the town treasurer by direct vote of town residents or authorize the select board to, to appoint the treasurer?" And then a yes vote would be continue to vote and no vote would be to have the select board appoint.
Because your concern is the confusion-ness of all these questions that we put out there.
I think you're right. Because it sounds like if you say no to that, there's no treasurer being appointed, right? That's all.
Correct. It would, so if, let's say, three people are running for treasurer at this upcoming town meeting.
Yep.
Whoever gets the highest number of votes would be the treasurer. But if this article passes--
I understand that.
In the timely fashion that it takes to advertise the position, interview, um, potential candidates, et cetera, um, the elected person would serve and then when the town makes the--
We talked about that last month. I understand that. It's just, I think the question, the way it's worded is, is a little tricky to understand at all. I don't think, I don't think it lets people know that they're voting today and they'll give up their right to vote tomorrow, that's all.
Well, it could always go back on the next year's ballot, "Shall the voters..." I mean, nothing's permanent in politics.
Oh, I understand that.
And I, I don't, I don't feel qualified to change some--
You guys get to vote on it. That's my recommendation.
And I don't feel qualified to change something that the person with the legal background that we pay to do this has given us. Yes, in our letter that is part of the town report, the select board letter, I think you have some good ideas that we could explain in there. And hopefully people then understand the question.
And I think that's the important thing is that the question is understood.
Yeah, I think that's all it came down to.
Yeah.
When you presented it last, last month, I was thinking, well, I mean, it almost sounds like we won't have a treasurer if we don't let you guys appoint him.
No.
Anyways, can I drop this off?
Sure.
Take a look at it or not.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so that's going to get--
Danny's got us.
Yes, Dan.
Could we revisit the transfer station? I would, I was about to ask a question when--
Oh, yeah, sure. Under your time, go ahead.
What are the financial benefits to the town? Do you know? Do we have any financial benefit?
Well, and I don't want to go deep into this, but I don't think we were looking for anything more than not getting worse in debt. Because the thing is, it was more of a safety aspect--
Yeah.
--as far as what we were dealing with. Um, and it's premature to, I mean, I would hope there's some synergies there.
Sure.
And--
Yeah.
It's, I would like to see what's on the table and actually have a meeting on that itself. So for us to discuss too much, and I mean, I would--
Understand.
--you know, hope that you guys attend because it's appreciative, your input--
A lawyer's wording, but give--
That when we get into the meat and potatoes of it, that we, I mean, we're not going to vote on it without you guys being there and we would expect some input, um, you know, on everything that's going on. But I'm not aware of any financial benefits, but there should be some synergies, meaning that we will be duplicating some of the things that each town is doing. And typically that's in the administrative end.
I, I, I do understand the safety, the safety portion of it. I mean, there's, there's no question. You're saying attending, so that, attending the Mount Tabor meeting?
No, it will be this meeting when we have it and it'll be warned on the agenda. And if it ends up on either a special meeting or a February meeting, and I'm not sure, I'm not even going to--
Right.
--say what, one, it's going to be, but we'll definitely make sure that it's posted for everybody because it is a big topic and we'd like everybody's input on it.
Yeah. If we were to move over to Mount Tabor, do we move the compacters or are we eliminating the compactor?
We make a decision about whether or not we're going to continue with compacters or go to, um, the typical forty-yard dumpsters.
And my argument will be that we would get rid of the compacters because they're costing us too much money right now.
I know when we started, the compacters, I think they were each six, six--
Six thousand dollars a year lease on it. It's a thousand dollars a year maintenance fee on it. And right now we are having the dumpsters picked up once a week for the garbage.
Yeah.
And they're between a third and a half full.
Yeah.
So we're paying an outrageous amount, in my opinion, on tipping fees because of it not being full.
So why, why are we, why are we not waiting until they're full? I mean, the reason why--
That decision goes back to, uh, select board before I was on. Because originally they were trying to get the compacters completely full and they kept running into the issue of, oh, hey, dumpster's full and it's ten o'clock Monday morning or Saturday, whichever. And then when you call Casellas and say, "We need the compactor changed right here, right now, because there's fifty people out in the yard mad," it would cost the emergency tipping fee. And that previous select board decided then to go to weekly dumping. That way they weren't paying the emergency fees. And now we're in the position we are that this is the, the normal, is what we inherited.
Well, and we're not stuck with that.
We're not stuck with that.
But the point that Steve made is the point that we all gotta, who wants to make the decision and say, "Well, we're going to run it to eighty percent full and then find out that we get a high demand on a day that typically we don't." And we end up, and that's the only thing with running our surplus inventory out too far and not paying to dump because you can't do anything.
You can't predict it.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I, I understand, I understand what you're saying. I was, I was on the board and I, I had a lot to do with bringing those compacters. And, and one of the reasons was we would have open dumpsters.
Yep, which Mount Tabor does not. They have a roof over the top of their--
Yeah.
--dumpsters so that you're eliminating the water and the snow and frost.
I, I, I think the thing is, there's a lot of good stuff to be talked about on this, but I don't know if this is the--
Okay.
And I don't want--
I, I will show up.
Because there is a million things that I want to interact on this too, but I don't want to drag it out for a two hour, because it deserves two hours.
And the public comment section here is really for action items on the agenda tonight, which this is not--
Want, I'll be here for that. Thank you very much.
And, and I think the thing is, there is a lot of discussion on that.
Yeah.
And for us to jam at least a minimum of an hour of discussion on that into this meeting might be--
Yeah.
--tough to do.
I understand. I understand.
No, but I appreciate you guys coming in on this because it is a big decision.
And a lot of concerns that you guys are bringing to us, we've already discussed too. And there are concerns too. So we're seriously going to look at everything--
It's a big move.
It is. It's a, it's a very large move and it deserves time to do the right research.
We're not going to rush it, I can tell you that.
Yeah. But we've also talked about it for decades and talked about, there's an opportunity right now that we can discuss it and see what that means for the town because it hasn't been really on the table for--
Right. And the only thing that I guess I'd say to end this part of this is, um, we've been fortunate, and I'm sure you've been here plenty of times on a Saturday or even a Monday, when these guys are trying to load their trucks. It's storming like son of a gun out there and they're just trying to get, and there's just cars everywhere and you can't, can't get in and out.
And the minute there's an accident there, you know, it's going to happen. Somebody's going to sue the town and then we're going to have to go through all that.
I totally understand the safety portion. Totally. There are other questions, but I'll, I'll be here for that meeting.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? We'll close the public comment at this time and I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the select board meeting of December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
It's made and seconded. Any corrections to the minutes? Am I hearing any? All those in favor of adopting the December twelfth, twenty twenty-four minutes as printed? Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And next I will entertain a motion to enter executive session for personnel matters.
I'll make it.
Motion is made. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded by Abbott. All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record show that we entered executive session at seven forty-five. Let the record reflect that we are back in session at eight oh three. Um, there's no action to be taken as a result of the executive session. And we will move forward to finalize and adopt the proposed budget with the amount to be raised by taxes and non-tax revenues.
So, um, what we come up with for Article Six will read, "Shall the voters authorize total expenditures..." I'm sorry. I shouldn't ate that piece of sour candy. Shall the voters authorize total expenditures for operating expenses of one million four hundred forty-two thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars, of which one million one hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars shall be raised by taxes and two hundred and eighty-nine thousand by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-five to June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Would someone care to move that motion?
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Fuller? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Haynes. Discussion?
Um, I think the thing is, most of that increase over last year, just for the record, is, um, we have a bridge project that the state's doing in twenty twenty-seven that fifty thousand dollars in this year's budget is going towards that project. So that's probably the whole, the biggest part of the whole increase over the last, um, budget.
So excluding that, um, there's basically forty thousand dollars worth of increase, which is pretty good. Any discussion?
The only question now we have, I guess, is the transfer station. I don't know how quick this is going to happen, but you know, there, if something comes of that and there are any, because there are going to be, if we do that, there are going to be, there could be some initial--
There could be, and there's also a grant out there that, um, could qualify for the Vermont Agency of Transportation. Commerce and community development can be, uh, used to help communities identify and prioritize their goals and projects. Link communities to a growing network of public and philanthropic partners to help them implement their priority projects. So, uh, it's a ten percent local cash match. So that could help. Any other discussion on the proposed budget? Okay. All those in favor of adopting proposed budget of one million four hundred forty-two thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars, of which one million one fifty-three five seventy-nine shall be raised by taxes and two hundred and eighty-nine thousand by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for the work you've put into this, Michelle.
Thank you. You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Okay. We'll move on to the road commissioner's report, if any.
Well, I think as far as action of the things, snowplow and spend and sand in the roads has been the hottest item going for things. But as far as, we got the tractor in Springfield is where it ended up.
Springfield.
It, it united, united, what are they, United Ag or what?
Ag and turf.
Yeah. It's over there. Hopefully, have we heard anything?
We haven't. They were in the middle of a transmission project, and they were in hopes to get it in this week. But he said it would probably be this coming week before they did get it in.
So, with that, hopefully, we have a active tractor this summer to get our road sides done more. The grader is also getting maintenance done on it. Right now, we're taking advantage of the, using the non-use of the grader for winter time to get some maintenance done. So, that's still in shop, is it? We're working on it? We're doing that in-house. We're using Rocky Rickets. There was some hoses, throttle cable. Anything else of major things?
No, the throttle cable's the only thing left right now. We're actually waiting for that to be shipped from Milton Caterpillar.
Yeah. And I guess our, other than, we're going to have to get a little bit more sand already for the year, which we still have budget room for. That's about it going on for roads this month.
Okay. Any old business?
I'm not sure what Paul, there was something from the state about that. Some, it was like, some grant we had, GA 0529, they keep sending to us, something that we, something to that, that we, Janus Ford, everybody.
Oh, is that the, the one about the electric vehicles?
No. It's to do with-
Is it about getting rid of diesel?
Finish, no, it's finishing up like reimbursement for-
No, we have nothing for that.
Okay. I just saw it keep coming.
Is that Stephanie?
Oh, that's, that was the-
The grants and aid projects.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Send them something both. I just want to make sure we work.
Well, they, they panic every year, because most municipalities don't fill out their paperwork as fast as the state would like and-
But they're not waiting on something.
They're not waiting on anything from us, because when I do one of those projects, I turn the paperwork in as soon as projects in, so I get paid for it. If I don't, I get hollered at.
And some of those projects that we can't always take advantage of with the low number of people we have, because we have to actually do our everyday work and not do the side works.
Okay. New business. I listed articles for town meeting. I have been contacted by a number of people, residents that live in town full-time and residents that are part-time, asking if a question could be put on the ballot to authorize the select board to develop a ordinance for the use of ATVs on town highways. As point of discussion, people felt that the last time this issue came up, it was not presented to the entire town for a vote, and they felt that they would like to hear from the entire body of voters. So-
I guess I, Mike, we didn't put that up to vote. I thought to roll it down.
That was on the ballot.
No, it wasn't.
No. It was a select board decision.
Oh, it was, Paul? Thanks, man.
Are you positive? Because I-
I'm positive.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I stand corrected, because I thought we had put it on the ballot.
Yeah. So, we turned it down on our own?
Yep.
Okay.
That's, so people are asking that it be presented to get the pulse of the entire town.
Well, I think then the proper direction for whomever it is that wants it to be on the ballot would be to get signatures. That's one way of doing it, but the select board has the prerogative of putting as many articles on here as we wish. And I don't see what's wrong with polling the public. I have no problem polling the public. I just-
Would have liked to saw it brought in by the public.
I would have liked to seen it brought in by the public with signature saying that there's a certain number of people interested in it.
Because I think that's what happened before, that there was a petition saying there were that many people not in support of-
Right. There was a petition signed by approximately 70 people, if I'm recalling correctly, that said they were not in favor of it, and it was polled.
I'm just surprised they don't come to the, a meeting and present their interests and even have them be prepared for us, you know, because in my mind, what are you going to-
They're not going to prepare the question. The question would be prepared by our attorney, so that it meets the legal requirements. And it's a poll of the people. And if it passes, then the select board during the course of meetings would discuss the wording of an ordinance. There'd be public input. And it would go down that road. If it fails, then nothing happens.
I mean, I'm okay with a question being put on the ballot, as long as, to me, if there's, if it comes, if that passes and there's an ordinance is put together, I think that people should have a say in that ordinance.
Absolutely.
As well.
And that's what would happen. It would be discussed at select board meetings. We'd look at model ordinances, and people would have a chance to comment.
So, are you asking the board for?
I'm asking, I'm suggesting-
I'll make the motion that we put the question on the ballot of whether the town should or should not adopt a ATV ordinance.
It'd be a non-binding.
A non-binding.
Right.
It's to give-
Adopt or pursue, or whatever it puts-
Select board direction.
Yeah.
It's a, yeah, no, it's a non-binding, so.
Because you're asking people to adopt. You're saying adopt or pursue.
Yeah, you're not adopting anything.
No, 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 but it's not, I mean, I'm thinking the question, the way the question's worded can matter here, even though it's non-binding. If it's a non-binding vote, the way you word a question can make a big difference.
And that's why the attorney will do the word crafting.
We could have a chance to see that. I'd like to see the question before, I mean-
Yeah. No, I, I think that's a-
It's all according to how it's, how it's written. If, if they vote yes for us to research a policy, if they want us to pursue it, then we go from there with the other, and adopt a ordinance.
Exactly. But the power to adopt an ordinance rests with the select board. It's not a townwide vote. What we're, what we're being asked to do is take the pulse of the community and see if the majority of the voters favor such an ordinance, or they do not.
And the other thing, I think if we're going to do this, it should be like the question with the treasurer, that have the lawyer put it down, that yes means this, no means, so that there's no question.
Even with the treasurer thing there is, we, we almost got to make sure, because-
You don't want to trick her. You want to ask her a question.
Yeah, we don't. I, I mean, I like not, you know, questions that are actually easy to answer, not, you give, you give yes with a no or a yes.
Right. And with the piece of paper that he gave us, he had put yes and no with the definition by each. Can I read that?
Yeah, I like that.
I would like to see that on both of the questions. The one for the treasurer, that yes means you're voting for a treasurer, no means it's appointed. Same with the ATV ordinance. I'd like to see it, yes, we're going to look into it, and no, we're not. That way, there's no questions.
Okay. So, there's a motion that's been made. We still need a second for it.
Can we restate the motion?
The motion would be, shall, shall an article appear on the town meeting ballot authorizing the select board to craft an ordinance pertaining to ATV use on town highways? And that's, that's not necessarily the wording that the attorney will come up with.
Right. Just what you're stating in the, in the motion of-
That's the intent.
Well, the thing is, the attorney, he words the best, it doesn't mean his is perfect. I mean, we could ask him by writing like that one there, is that one good too?
Yeah.
I mean, as long as it doesn't knock the legal definition of a vote, he's going to just say yes, no, and in the two seconds he looks at it and say, yeah, that meets it too. And we'll say, well, we like his version better than your version, and let's, because I, I think the thing that I'm getting from a lot of this is, the incarity is more of a problem with people than the question. And if we can-
And an informed voter is an intelligent voter. So-
Well, I just hate to see an informed voter go and pick the wrong one, what they thought they were picking.
I like it, but I can't, I haven't seen the other one.
Well, the other one, do you have the other one, Brad, right there? I mean, we've, because these have got a, we don't have any time after this meeting, right, for, this is it for things going on the ballot.
Right. That's my only concern is that-
So, we're still waiting for a second fellow on ATV?
Oh, that's it. That's the treasurer one. Yeah.
That's not from the lawyer, though. Didn't you have one from the lawyer?
That's the one from-
Well, yeah, see, the only thing this does, it clarifies, a yes vote continues, let voters elect the town treasurer, a noble select board appointed town.
The wording that the lawyer came up with is, shall the voters authorize the select board to appoint the town treasurer as provided in 17 VSA 2651F. And what Bill suggested is that we explain it better.
Yeah. Because that one's pretty clear. You look at number one, it was pretty clear. You know what you're doing.
Okay. But all of this discussion right now is out of order, because we still don't have a second on the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, now we're going to-
Right, but you're discussing a different motion from what you're voting on.
No, they're saying, for example, could there be an explanation to go along with the question?
We're discussing language for the ATV one.
And it's-
Referring to this.
Right.
Sorry I'm making a mess of things, Drew, but that's what I do the best.
And this is why I'm not doing it.
I almost called you Steve Fisk.
Oh.
You're getting me all tired. It's almost my bedtime.
All right.
This is a simple clarification we can do in our selectment's letter too, correct?
Correct.
But I think-
Which I'm still asking for input for.
I, I still think it would be better if there was wording in that.
In front of them.
Right. Right in the article, so that there's no question.
I respectfully disagree, because the more wording that's in the article, the more confusing it becomes to people. The shorter the question, the easier it is to comprehend.
I don't know. I, 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 I-
I voted on a lot of school budgets that I was so confused about by the time I read.
Well, and, and you know, that's what we're trying not to do.
Exactly.
But your approach and Steve's approach are different, and my approach may be different on that too. But I, I, I mean, we're still back to the same thing, is we're trying to make sure these articles are not confusing.
Question for the town to vote on, to me. Do they want the town to pursue?
Correct. It's that simple. Any other discussion? Okay, let's call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have no other, any other new business?
I don't have any. Less Kenny does.
Nope. Okay. Then let's have a motion to adjourn. And that is happening at 8:22. Thank you all for attending.